Switch me to the paper. Okay, you don't have to hear it. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 15th, Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're here to open to go into executive session to conduct strategy in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief contract. So we will go into executive session and then we will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. So with that, can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief contract, to vote to approve and not release executive session meeting minutes from October 12th, 2021, and then to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, so we need to do roll call. We'll just go in order.
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
Leah, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, thanks, everyone. We'll see you back here at 7:00 PM for open session.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to the Tuesday, February 15th Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we do that, just wanted to talk about the updated guidance that came out from the state today about face masks. So there will be something coming on the Facebook page, but Facebooks are now optional. There are a couple instances that you do need to have them if you're a close contact or if you've had COVID-19, if you're not feeling good and still in the isolation period. So look for that update that will come out tomorrow on Facebook with those specifics. But with that, I think, you know, anyone that comes in here from this point forward, you're free to wear your mask if you so choose. But if you're vaccinated and you don't want to wear one, I think it's okay that we're not doing so with the new guidance. So with that... Doc, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Anything for citizens' input, Christina? Okay. All right, so we just left executive session to talk about the fire chief's contract. So the first thing we're going to do is make a motion to approve said contract in open session. So we've all reviewed, and I think we're ready for that vote if you have a motion there.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024 Foxborough Fire Chief Contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we have the whole board present tonight, so we don't need to do a roll call. So all those in favor? All right, and getting right to it ahead of schedule, we have our new building commissioner, Scott Shippey, if you don't mind coming right up to the podium. If you can just make sure you're in front of a microphone so everyone at home can see you and hear you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. Getting acclimated.
Yes, what day are we on?
I have no idea.
Okay, so we're still very new.
They're all just blurred right now. No, I'm in my fourth week.
Okay, great. So every month, we have each department come in and give a department update. But we thought, you know, it wouldn't really be fair for you to have to give a department update within your first month. So we thought we'd do more of an introduction. Obviously, you know this role is turned over quite a bit, so we're looking forward to some stability. So if you can tell us a little bit about yourself and the stability you'll bring to the town and the department.
Well, again, good evening. My experience goes back, I'm going to show my age, over 35 years in the construction field. I started actually in trade school in 1980s. I'm not going to go back further than that. And I was doing my own business when I was probably 18 or 19. Worked in the private sector for a little bit, both commercial and residential. Started in municipality around 2000, working for the DPW in Marion as a carpentry division. Moved up to the foreman in that in two years, where I also studied to become a local inspector. And I got certified as a local inspector and became the alternate local inspector for backup. But I was also on the fire department as a call firefighter. And the chief at the time asked me to be the fire prevention officer. So I served as a fire prevention officer for almost 13 years when I actually retired from the fire department because I took the position of the building commissioner and there was like a conflict. Started the building commissioner in Marion around 2010 until, obviously, until you got me.
Okay, all right, great.
And hopefully, I can bring the stability back here. I met the staff. They're a great staff. Lisa is wonderful. She's great to work with, but I hope I can bring the stability back. I don't think I'm going anywhere very soon.
Okay, great. We're going to hold you to that. And, you know, obviously, it's a great staff, but I think it's also a great town to do business. And while there's rules that everyone has to follow, we also like to be, I think, a business-friendly town in just understanding that, you know, a lot of these businesses, they may be on their second or third person. So just trying to, you know, think in their shoes as well.
I look forward to working with the planning department and welcoming them into business as long as they do follow the right processes. And we can walk them through that, and we can direct them through that. So as long as they follow the process, we can get them through it.
It's complicated, so sometimes people just need a little guidance.
It can be, but it's not that bad. Your bylaws seem a lot easier to digest than the one I came from. Just then, there was a lot of convoluted paragraphs in there that didn't make sense. But we were working through it. That was part of my job. I was actually on the codification committee to try to clean up the bylaws and sit there and figure out what the intent was and how they should be interpreted. But I didn't write them or anything. The members of the board did.
Great. Well, we look forward to seeing what you, you know, can bring to Foxborough, what improvements you think that we need here. So any questions from the board?
Do you live relatively close to...
Well, how is relatively close? I'm about 37 minutes away. I live close to the Cape. Not quite the bridge, but all highway.
Marlboro. No, further?
No, he's south of the Cape.
Well, the other way down, 495, I assume.
Oh, I'm thinking of, what's the town that's on the way to the Cape?
Middleboro. Fifteen minutes from Middleboro.
Just avoid that Cape traffic.
Further down.
Thursdays are worse than Fridays now.
Exactly. They're all bad. And they're going to be fixing the bridges soon, too.
Is that a definite?
They want new bridges, yeah.
I have to think that's far out, though.
I don't know how much it is. It's like a billion? Like $2 billion projects.
It's like the big dig will end up in $10 billion.
Yeah.
You should put them underground.
Well, now the signs will sit there and be correct when they say tunnel to the Cape.
Locals only.
So, Madam Chair, if I could speak?
Yeah, of course.
So we're really excited to have Scott here. He's made a big splash. He's met all of our department heads. He's been around to all the different departments, and he's been, you know, busy meeting the businesses, especially ones that have active projects going on. You know, during his evenings, he's been coming here and getting some turnover with former building commissioner Bill Gasparra, who knows the town well, as well as Paul DeBadges, our recently interim building commissioner. And they both had great things to say about the turnover they've had with Scott. So he may be only in his fourth week, but he knows the town well already. And, you know, he wanted to come in here and, you know, be sure-footed about the stuff that's already going on, especially with things on Wall Street, things up at, you know, Route 1 and all that. And he's doing a great job. And we've got him integrated with the other departments that are using the People GIS. You know, he's working with the assessing department, so we're really glad to have him here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that was one of the other things I was going to ask, too, is, you know, we got the stadium. And what amazed me when I was a freshman selectman and getting a tour of the stadium with Fire Chief, Police Chief, and Bill Gasparra, like all the work, not just necessarily the games, but the concerts, the work that you will have to do going forward with the concerts amazed me. And it's good to hear you've already been in contact with Bill Gasparra and other people.
I talk to him almost on a weekly basis.
That you have, yeah, because I'm sure that something's going to be a little bit of a learning curve for you. You know, buildings are buildings, but, you know...
Absolutely.
The staging of a concert.
Yeah, both Bill and Paul DeBadges have been very great resources right now. And they told me to call them anytime, so I told them I'd call them at 2:00 a.m. in the morning when I can't sleep.
In a cold sweat.
I'm like, oh, did I miss something? But yeah, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, but I think we can get through it. Like the games, like I told the staff, I was like, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel. I'm here to...
Right back here.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to the Tuesday, February 15th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, but before we do that, just wanted to talk about the updated guidance that came out from the state today about face masks. So there will be something coming on the Facebook page, but Facebooks are now optional. There are a couple instances that you do need to have them if you're a close contact or if you've had COVID-19, if you're not feeling good and still in the isolation period. So look for that, that update that will come out tomorrow on Facebook with those specifics. But with that, I think, you know, anyone that comes in here from this point forward, you're free to wear your mask if you so choose, but if you're vaccinated and you don't want to wear one, I think it's, it's okay that we're not doing so with the new guidance. So with that. Doc, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Anything for citizens' input, Christina? Okay. All right, so we just left executive session to talk about the Fire Chief's contract. So the first thing we're going to do is make a motion to approve said contract in open session. So we've all reviewed, and I think we're ready for that vote. If you have a motion there.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024 Foxborough Fire Chief contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we have the whole board present tonight, so we don't need to do a roll call. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And getting right to it ahead of schedule, we have our new building commissioner, Scott Shippey, if you don't mind coming right up to the podium. If you can just make sure you're in front of a microphone, so everyone at home can see you and hear you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. Getting acclimated.
Yes. What, what day are we on?
I have no idea.
Okay, so are you still very new?
They're all just blurred right now. No, I'm in my fourth week.
Okay, great. So every month, we have each department come in and give a department update, but we thought, you know, it wouldn't really be fair for you to have to give a department update within your first month. So we thought we'd do more of an introduction. Obviously, you know, this role is turned over quite a bit, so we're looking forward to some stability. So if you can tell us a little bit about yourself and the stability you'll bring to the town and the department.
Well, again, good evening. My, my experience goes back, I'm gonna show my age, over 35 years in the construction field. I started actually in, in trade school in 1980s. I'm not going to go back further than that. But, and, and I was doing my own, own business when I was probably 18 or 19. Worked in the private sector for a little bit, both commercial and residential. Started in municipality around 2000, working for the DPW in Marion as a, as a carpentry division. Moved up to the foreman in that in two years, where I also studied to become a local inspector. And I got certified as a local inspector and became the alternate local inspector for backup. But I was also on the fire department as a call firefighter, and they, the chief at the time asked me to be the fire provincial, prevention officer. So I served as a fire prevention officer for almost 13 years when I actually retired from the fire department because I took the position of the building commissioner, and there was like a conflict. Started the building commissioner in Marion around 2010 until, then, until, obviously, until you got me.
Okay, all right, great.
And hopefully, I can bring the stability back here. I met the staff. They're a great staff. Lisa is wonderful. She's, she's great to work with, but I hope I can bring the stability back. I don't think I'm going anywhere very soon.
Okay, great. We're gonna, we're gonna hold you to that. And, you know, obviously, it's a great staff, but I think it's also a great town to do business. And while there's rules that everyone has to follow, we also like to be, I think, a business-friendly town and just understanding that, you know, a lot of these businesses, they may be on their second or third person. So just trying to, you know, think, think in their shoes as well.
I look forward to working with the planning department and, and welcoming them in new business, as long as they do follow the right processes.
Right.
And we can walk them through that, and we can direct them through that. So it's, as long as they follow the process, we can get them through it.
It's complicated, so sometimes people just need a little guidance.
It can be, but it's, it's not that bad.
Yeah.
Your bylaws seem a lot of, lot easier to digest than the one I came from. Just then. It was a lot of convoluted paragraphs in there that didn't make sense. But we were working, we were working through it. That was part of my, my job. I was actually on the codification committee to try to clean, clean up the bylaws and sit there and figure out what the intent was and how they should be interpreted. But I didn't, I didn't like write them or anything. The members of the board did.
Great.
So.
Well, we look forward to seeing what you, you know, can bring, bring to Foxborough, what improvements you think that we, we need here. So any questions from the board? You're welcome.
Do you live relatively close to?
Well, how's relatively close? I'm about 37 minutes away. I live close to the Cape.
Okay.
Not quite the bridge, but all highway.
Marlboro.
Huh?
Marlboro. No, further?
No, he's, he's, he's south of the Cape.
Well, the other way down, 495, I assume.
Oh, what, I'm thinking of, what's the town that's on the way to the Cape?
Middleboro.
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 Middleboro, yeah, Middleboro.
Fifteen minutes from Middleboro.
Okay.
Just avoid that Cape traffic.
Further down.
Thursdays are worse than Fridays now.
Exactly. They're all bad. And they're gonna be fixing the bridges soon, too.
That's gonna be interesting.
They want new bridges, yeah.
Yeah, I heard about that.
I have to think that's far out, though.
I don't know how much it is. It's like a billion?
Like, $2 billion projects.
Yeah.
It's like the big dig will end up in $10 billion.
Yeah, it's gonna be enough.
Should put them underground.
Yeah, I know. Well, now, now the signs will sit there and be correct when they say tunnel to the Cape.
Yeah. Locals only.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, if I could speak?
Yeah, of course.
So we're really excited to have Scott here. He's, he's made a big splash. He's met all of our department heads. He's met, you know, he's been around to all the different departments, and he's, he's been, you know, busy meeting the, the businesses, especially ones that have active projects going on. You know, during, during his evenings, he's been coming here and getting some turnover with former building commissioner, Bill Casparra, who knows the town well, as well as, as, as Paul, or Paul DeBadges, our recently interim building commissioner. And they both had great things to say about the turnover they've had with Scott. So he may have, he may be only in his fourth week, but he's, you know, he's, he's, he knows the town well already. And, you know, he, he wanted to come in here and, you know, be sure-footed about the stuff that's already going on, especially with things, things on Wall Street, things up at, you know, Route 1 and all. And he's, he's doing a great job. And we've got him integrated with the other departments that are using the People GIS. The, you know, he's working with the assessing department. So we're really glad to have him here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry. Well, that was one of the other things I was gonna ask, too, is, you know, we got the stadium. And what, what amazed me when I was a freshman selectman and getting a tour of the stadium through with Fire Chief, Police Chief, and Bill Casparra, like, all the work, not, not just necessarily the games, but the concerts, the work that, that, that you will have to do going forward with the concerts amazed me. And it's good to hear you've already been in contact with Bill Casparra and other people.
I talked to him almost on a weekly basis.
That you have, yeah, because I'm sure that something's gonna be a, a little bit of a learning curve for you. You know, buildings are buildings, but, you know, the.
Absolutely.
The staging of a, of a concert.
Yeah, both, both Bill and Paul DeBadges have been very great resources right now. And, and they told me to call them anytime, so I told them I'd call them at 2:00 AM in the morning, when I can't sleep.
In a cold sweat.
Yeah. I'm like, oh, did I miss something? But yeah, it, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, but I think we can get through it. Like, the games, it's, games, like, like I told the staff, I was like, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel. I'm here to be a part of that, the mechanism to run that wheel. So hopefully, everything goes status quo, and we can work things out there.
So just, if I could just add, Madam Chair, the, the staff is actually very thrilled to have, have Scott here. And I think stability is his key word, and he's right. Stability is really important for us right now. And we've had a history of very good, very good building department over the years. I mean, we had a little bit of a rough patch in terms of, you know, a little bit of changeover. But having said that, you, you come at a time where this town's really moving forward in a lot of different directions. And so we, we're glad that you're here to help sort of guide us through that. And the fact that he has a fire background is fit right, fit right in with the fire department, which was really good. So the fire department's thrilled to have him on board as well. So it's gonna be a good mix and a good match, rather, for us, and we're happy to have you here.
I actually, I actually am doing like bi-weekly meeting, bi-monthly meetings with the fire department, just so, so we're all on the same page. I'm working with Deputy Larissy and trying to put up a schedule on doing like annual inspections and stuff like that. That way, we're all right there, and we're working hand in hand, because we're both in the same, same boat, so to speak. We're here for public safety, and that's, that's our main priority, is public safety.
It'll be interesting to see how you guys connect those. So we're excited to have you here, and I think I would be remiss to not thank Bill Casparra again for coming back to the plate another time. So I, you know, he's always so great and there for any questions and such a great resource.
Very knowledgeable, man.
And Paul DeBadges, who was, who was a terrific, he stepped in.
I think Paul wrote code.
I think he did. I think, I think Bill actually learned from Paul, which is kind of interesting. But, but the two of them have been a huge resource for all of us, and we're very grateful for their efforts, too.
Bill actually remains as our alternate building commissioner. So we won't be needing him, but, but it's, you know, we do have a backup to everything. One of the things during interviewing that was, one of the many things that was impressive is the work that Scott did in Marion with Tabor Academy. And it seemed like they, you know, like up on Route 1, there was always something going on in Marion and, and at Tabor Academy on a, on a large scale. And we talked about that quite a bit, so we felt comfortable that the transition here would be smooth.
Well, it's a great place. Welcome.
It seems to be. I'm glad to be here. I'm hoping.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
All right.
All right, nice to meet you.
You're up for luck.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Good night.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
All right, so moving along to the draft warrant. The purpose of tonight's warrant talk, the warrant closes, I think it's today, right? It automatically closes. So we're here to kind of, you know, bless that we want to move everything forward. I know we took a vote on the marijuana article, got a temperature for that before we put it on. I think we've talked about all the others. So if there's anything that we wanted to remove or still had concerns about, now would be the time to do that. We don't have to get into the specifics of the language. Plenty of these are still being vetted, like by planning board. They just saw the marijuana article for the first time. I think they'll have some feedback, we'll have some feedback, like right away, I think some of the zone stuff. I don't know that that's necessarily what we want to do. So I think we'll get into those. We'll have presentations for the ones that we want. I think we can use AdCom where it makes sense, and then where we want to have presentations. And then we'll take positions on the Board of Selectmen-sponsored articles. So I didn't know if the citizens' petitions, when those will go to AdCom, right?
They will.
So, you know, and now that it's televised, you know, I take the position that I think we can, you know, go to the meeting or watch those, rather than have them come, come in here also. But we're all, you know, if, if the board wants to see any presentations for any of the, for any of these, I think we can certainly make that request early.
Do you have insight on the sidewalk citizens' petition? Do you know, just the, I don't think it's exactly where it is, is in here. Do you have a?
Yeah, so I actually looked today. I drove by today. And there is a new citizens' petition in here, too, that maybe Bill can speak a little bit about. But the sidewalk goes 350 south, looks to me, driving by, like it was the house right next to Paula Lane. So it looks like it's from Paula Lane up to the South Foxborough Community Center, based on my observation, reading the warrant, and then, and then driving by. I haven't spoken with anyone that was, that had submitted that article, but just in driving by and looking, it looks like it's that section there.
Is there anything, is there sidewalks north of that that you noticed, or are they starting it at that point?
There is not, but it definitely widens a little bit as you go up over the hill, over the highway. There's a little bit more of a shoulder to the road.
Yeah. I just wonder, like, I'm in favor of sidewalks on a street with schools and churches on it. Why not do sidewalks further north up to where the sidewalks end?
Well, there's, there's a cost factor in all of this. So I think, I think the challenge with this one is that none of us even, I never heard anything about this until it was submitted. I still have not spoken to the advocates for it. But there are a number of moving parts to this that are gonna have to be addressed by DPW, just in the mechanics of it alone, because there is, whether or not this, there's room within our right of way to build a sidewalk in that area, is a question mark. Otherwise, now you're looking at taking, land takings. That could, that could be an issue. We are challenged already with building, retaining the existing sidewalks, let alone adding additional ones. So this is, and the cost, it's unclear to me as to where the cost estimate was even, even came from. That, that part of it has not been explained, or, and maybe it's been explained to others, but I have not seen any explanation of it as to where the cost came from. But the cost could be significantly higher, or it could be right on, for, for all we know. So I think it's, it depends upon, you know, further analysis of this. And DPW has, is probably the first place it'll go to for consideration and review. But, but I think the biggest challenge is that there is no funds set aside for this, other than we'd have to take out of free cash. And as I said, there are other, the town is focused on developing a sidewalk program, but that is primarily to fix the ones we have. And that's going forward, you know, as part of a, it'll be part of our, our pavement management program, which we were already talking about prior to COVID, but that was set backwards because of what, what would do the impacts of that.
So what's the process, then, if there's a citizens', citizens' petition to add sidewalk? This is the, the very first step in a, in a process, presumably?
Well, it is. And it's, the, the challenge is that it gets submitted to town meeting, and unfortunately, so we're gonna have to do a fair amount of work to explain it to everyone as to how this works, because the last thing the town can afford to do is to actually have a run on sidewalks in town, where we don't have the money to do that. And I think that's the biggest challenge and concern right now. There are, there may be funds coming down to us through the federal government, through the, through the infrastructure program that maybe help us with that. But right now, there is no set aside or funding source dedicated for this purpose. So that's, I think it's something we have to really think about and come up with a strategy to try and address. I'm not saying that, that the need isn't real, or real or reasonable. It's just that the fact that it's the method of how we get there is gonna be a challenge.
Yeah, I think it's worth investigating. I think it, it's a main road out of the center town, and it, and it's a main thoroughfare. It's other locations south of here, different towns. So, you know, there's significant traffic, and like, there's schools there. And so it's a safety, safety concern.
It's outside of the Walker Zone for the Taylor.
It's a mile, at least a mile further down the road.
It's definitely outside of the Walker Zone.
Yeah, but there is the South Foxborough Community Center.
Yeah, and it is a narrow, it's a narrow piece right there.
And it is a narrow, yep.
It's, yeah, so.
Well, I think like Bill, Bill said, I, I mean, I would never say no to a sidewalk, but yet, you know, this one comes up, next town meeting, there's three or four that come out. I mean, if they just, if they pass, they pass. I'm not, I think, I think we have to make sure that the right people vet the need and where they are, because if these, if these petitions just come up, you know, and they, they can get the signatures and put it on. And I'm, I'm by no means saying this, this isn't a legit need.
Sure.
But I think, I think we have to be careful, because if the money isn't there for these sidewalks, where will it come from, you know?
Well, if that's what the town wants, if they want sidewalks, then, you know, if, if the town agrees that they, that they need sidewalks in specific areas, and it's just, at the very least, it's moving it to closer to the front of, of what we're trying to do as a community, then that's.
Oh, I, I agree with you, but then, but we, they better be prepared to pay for them, too.
Sure.
Because that's the only way.
That's part of the deal, so, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think it, then it becomes a question of prioritization, you know, what else gets, what else doesn't get paid for, if that's the case.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So I think, you know, we have to look at that, too.
So as we, as we move forward, I know right now AdCom is going through the budget. I think the last meeting is due to happen in February, maybe their last meeting in Wednes, on, the last Wednesday of February goes through the budget. And then, will they go through the actual articles? I don't think that we've seen a schedule, because the warrant has to close first for us to get that. So we will get a schedule, which we can post online already right now. Their, their meetings are out there for the budget process, and you can watch those, since they are being recorded due to COVID at this time. So if you can let us know the schedule when it comes out, or just let us know that it's posted there, so that, you know, we can follow along, either in person or televised, depending where that, where the temperature of the board is for what they're comfortable meeting with. But for tonight, you know, forget the, let's call it, like, your run-of-the-mill, you know, budget, town report, CIP, the standard stuff that comes at the beginning of, of every, every town warrant. I think what we're really talking about tonight, and the citizens' petitions, obviously, because those, those just go on, we're really talking about Article 19 that we're, that we're sponsoring. That's the change from select, Board of Selectmen to Select Board. We are talking about the billboard warrant article.
Which is 29.
Which is 29. We're talking about the marijuana one. And then, I'm just looking at the table of contents to see if there's anything else that I'm missing that's Board of Selectmen. The, did I say the door-to-door canvassing as well? So those are kind of what I would call our different ones. So the signbala, the marijuana ones, the change to Select Board, and then the door-to-door canvassers and solicitors. So those are kind of our outside of the norm that are sponsored by us, that, you know, we've taken the vote on the marijuana, but I don't think that there's any concerns about the others before we close the warrant. Again, we'll have plenty of time to massage the exact language within, but this is at least that we're gonna have the placeholder to move forward. So I don't think we need a vote. This will close automatically, correct, Bill?
That's correct.
Okay. And then let us know when that schedule comes out. And then, I think everyone has heard about Articles 21 through 26. You may see they're back on here. It's not because someone is, is taking the articles and putting them back in front of, in front of the town. It's, it's due to a technicality that we have to have them back on here for now. So those may come off after we hear from the Attorney General. But basically, what happened is the town requested them to be posted in the Sun Chronicle, but the Sun Chronicle never posted the public hearings. The public hearings did happen, but there was, you know, a, a notice issue there. So Bob Cutler is working with the AG's office. So those 21 through 26 are on there right now as placeholders, in case we do have to bring those forward due to the technicality again. So know that those will come off, but we probably won't know till the first, you know, eight to 10 days of March where the AG stands. So any other questions on any of those?
Yeah, you alluded to it earlier. Maybe Bill, give us an update on that third citizens' input one.
Yes, the new one. Thank you, Doc.
That we didn't know about till.
Yep. So there's the Market Street one that we knew about, the sidewalk one, and then this new one.
And the third one is, is one where there is a, it was a petition that was submitted for requesting that direct mailing be, be, be sent to, direct mailing notices be sent to all residents, homeowners in the town, whenever a, a zone, residential zone change is being proposed for a possible change or amendment. This was submitted last week by 14 registered voters who are requesting that, that an individual notice be sent to every single residential homeowner, which is extreme, because that's, in, as the law, the current law of the state, Chapter 48, requires that, that it's the immediate butters to get notified, and, and maybe a little bit beyond that. But, but this would notify every single residential home. So obviously, this was intended to, to make sure that this is a blanketed piece of information that everybody's aware of. You know, we can, I'll leave, leave others to judge whether, how, whether the significance of it. But, but it's, it's really a, would, that in of itself is a cost factor for us to consider as well, as well as a work factor. There's a, that's a, there's a burden to put all that stuff together, notifying everyone of the community. And then the cost of mailing those notices out to everyone is, is also a cost impact to the community as well. So I think that's something that the community will have to debate amongst itself, determine whether or not that's, that's reasonable or not. And certainly, the merits of, the argument will be presented before the, the advisory committee and before town meeting, and the, and the committee will decide whether that's, that's the right way to go.
And then Seth had, had a couple of questions on Article 27 and 28. And I thought, instead of us just connecting directly, it would be better off, just talk about it up here, so we can kind of all, you know, all have the information. Seth had asked, had asked who drafted the, the warrant article, and it was drafted by Town Council. Kevin Weinfeld and I had some early preliminary discussions with Bill, just for like direction, how to move forward. And Pat is also Town Council for Mashpee that just recently passed this. So, you know, instead of recreating the wheel, we thought that was a good one to start with. It obviously has to go through planning board to see, you know, what zones are appropriate, what limitations we want to put. So by no means is the draft here, you know, has not been vetted by, you know, us or a planning board. I think that there's still some work to do there. But it was drafted by Town Council, which is the kind of standard procedure. When planning board had seen it, we, we hadn't even seen it yet. So I think that they do have some reactions and some changes, if you happen to see that meeting, that they want to address. And was there a third piece that you had questioned, Seth? Sorry?
So the first piece was specifically who's, who's requesting this? How did this get to us at this point in time? And who's, who's promoting this? Like, this is a Board of Selectmen article, but this was, you know, something that was given to us. So I'm, I'm trying to find out who's, who's behind this, really.
So, so here's kind of the backstory. I had, you know, brought this up, seeing some of the revenue that other towns are getting, just as a, you know, what's the feeling? I had talked to Bill, you know, earlier about it, just to kind of feel people out. I don't know if other people.
It was earlier this year. Well, it was probably last, late last year.
Maybe, yeah, definitely, definitely not 2022.
Right.
Um, but just an early discussion. I don't know if anyone else did. And then someone actually came to us. So an applicant actually came to the town and said.
Who was that?
Um, it's not a, it's not a formal, there's no formal application.
Right, yeah. There were actually a couple.
It was just like an informal.
We had inquiries from two different directions. Both, one area looking to try and locate one in, in one area, another one was, another one to, from a person who potentially could be an applicant. And they were inquiring about the process for how this would work, and then would require a town meeting vote. And then, then the, then the review of that process, which was, and I think this group was actually represented by, by Frank Spillane.
Yeah.
Who came forward and said, you know, it looks like you, the towns only can, can only get one license for distribution, as well as one license for a, for cultivation, which means that if only one license gets generated, if the, if one person comes forward with an application to do that, then, and that person, then the one license comes forward, that, then it becomes a competitive process as to who would get the license. It wouldn't be that one person necessarily. So it's a fair point, that, that if in fact, somebody could come forward and say, look, we're gonna offer you more money for that, more, a better benefit for the license to get that for the community, then that person will have spent all the time and resources to get that license, only to find out they, they got outbid at the process. So the recommendation at that point was, you know, the town should then go forward and at least look to send, and check with the town to see how they feel about this issue. Because the town, we put the, the thing, the town put that issue on the agenda, on the, on the warrant, rather, five years ago. It was actually put forward as, as a, a non-binding referendum, as well as a town meeting article. The town, the non-binding referendum was, was indicated that it was about a 60-40 split against marijuana in the, at the time. And then it went to town meeting, and town meeting defeated it as well. Again, that was five years ago, at the time, 19, 2017, where there were no regulations in place. It was still being worked through at, at the state level with the Cannabis Control Commission. There were no real clear regulations. So there was a fair amount of nervousness in the community about whether or not we want to adopt this, meaning the town.
Yeah. And I think there was some risk based on it being still illegal at the federal level.
Exactly right.
And no one had done it yet, you know?
Which is still illegal at the federal level.
Yeah.
So there is risk.
So, so if, so five years later, here we are, and now we're surrounded by communities that actually have adopted this. And, and, and the Chair, Chairman is right. This is a, a fairly substantial revenue source for, for the, for communities to consider.
So I had, I had brought it up as like, you know, the, I, I voted against it sitting in town meeting, I remember. You know, just times have changed. It's, it's, I think people may be more comfortable with it, some people may not. But I had brought up to Bill, you know, is this a time, maybe, that we relook at it again? But there had really never been like a catalyst to, to kind of move it forward. But we had, you know, I had brought it up. I don't, I don't even, I think it was before I I don't, I don't even, I think it was before I was even chair. We, I just kind of brought it up in conversation and passing.
You know, what do you think of this? And I said, well, you know, it, we're, we're surrounded now by communities that have it.
Sure. So, so when we talk about revenue source, um, the way it's positioned, when you read about it sometimes, if you read, read some of the opinions in the, in the reporter say, is it's positioned as pure incremental revenue. Maybe that's the case. Maybe there's an additional revenue stream because it happens to be marijuana over some other business. But if you have a location, that would be a viable marijuana establishment. That means that some other business that's not there, maybe that other business is not as profitable for the town. But, um, I, I don't know that it's pure incremental revenue. If we don't have marijuana sales or cultivation, that we're not generating the same revenue as some other business perhaps.
Well, there's, there's two ways to look at that. All right. First of all, if somebody comes in and, and takes up a piece of property and they continue to pay taxes over time, that's actually true, that they would actually continue to pay taxes. What this is, oh, this is a combination, this is a, a tax plus revenue to pay taxes. So in other words, you, the person would buy the property, uh, locate there, and then they would pay a property tax on top of that. They're required to pay a 3% uh, uh, sales tax on top, on top of the, for each item that's sold to the town. That goes directly to the town.
So there's increment, 3% incremental sales tax.
Plus, a, for the first five years, there's an additional 3%.
Up to.
Up to, up to 3%, which has been pretty much consistently done that way. But for the first five years, as part of the, 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 the impact agreement that's supposed to be signed with the community.
The mitigation.
Mitigation. So it's now you're talking about 6%.
6% on top of, okay, so that's, that's, all right. So 6% on, who knows what kind of sale, what kind of sales is this type of operation?
So, so the, the last year, this past year.
Millions a year.
Millions.
Millions. So you, this past year, cannabis actually outsold alcohol in Massachusetts. The revenue source was like 51 million versus, I think, 38 million for alcohol sales. So it's, so that's.
Okay. So 51 million across 200 and, well, I don't know how many towns have it, but let's say 51. So it tops out of like a million bucks a year.
Well, not everybody has it, so a lot of.
Right. That's what I'm saying. $50 million. There's 262 towns in the United, in the United States.
350.
350, okay. So let's say 100 have marijuana. 50?
I don't even think that much yet.
All right. Let's say it's 50. That's a million bucks. So you're talking about 60,000, right?
So right now, the, the, what I, what we're seeing around us, communities have taken in 350, 360,000 dollars a year, half a million dollars a year in, 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 in additional revenues.
350,000 and.
350, 500,000 in some cases. And even more.
In 2017, it hadn't been done. You know, if you look back at some of these had long lines, you know, there was, there was some growing pains.
Yeah.
Um, you know, now it's a little bit more tried and true. Is it worth revisiting? Having someone come to us informally and say, hey, you know, would you consider doing this? I think it felt like the right time, at least for me. And that's when I came to the board two meetings ago and said, hey, you know, what do you guys think about putting this on? And that's, that's kind of how we got there.
Right. So I just wanted to get round numbers, ballpark, so.
And I think we will get more numbers and we can be better prepared with numbers when we have a presentation on this one. I think this is one that we should probably have a presentation on.
Who's going to present? I mean, so to be clear, those, the two or three unnamed people at this point are bringing it to us, right? So we're, we don't know, I don't know who they are. People in town don't know who they are. So that, just to be very certain.
They're not.
I don't think they're bringing it to us. I think they're requesting information about where the town.
Where the town stands on it.
Here it is.
Right. And here it is. Let's, let's bring it back in front of the town.
Yep.
So I'm glad you asked the question Seth, because I have the same question.
Right.
Just because somebody had, um, sent me a text and, and just said, hey, um, not, not pro or against anything, he just said, hey, he goes, can I just ask you, like, you guys just brought this up and voted to put it on the warrant? He said, we're, what's driving it, you know? So I'm, I'm glad that we're having this discussion. So it, so it's, it's out there now. People like, you know, he was like, oh, I just feel like you guys just said, oh, we're going to put this on the warrant. He, he was curious, like, did people come forward or whatever? So, um, I mean.
They did.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I, and I've, I've been thinking about it for a while and saying, you know, is the time right for us to revisit it? Maybe it goes through, maybe it doesn't. But is the time, you know, although it's only been five years, a lot has changed in that five years. And is it the right time, you know, to look at it?
So question kind of coming off of Seth was saying, so who, so because we're sponsoring it, who will present, like, like, how, how are we going to, how is this going to be presented at town meeting? Like, the numbers and stuff?
And hearing from Chief Grace, there's going to be, you know, I think that there's going to be a whole.
So it'll probably be myself or a few other people that will do it. Because I think, you know, and it'd be nice to be able to have somebody who's an expert in this area to make that presentation. Because I do think though that there are, and maybe somebody from the Cannabis Control Commission or somebody like that that has a good understanding of how it's being affected, how it's affecting the entire Commonwealth and how this is really being a very good resource for the communities. Now, having said that, there are concerns, of course. Other, there are two sides to this equation, as we all know. So, um, and, um, so just the, uh, last week, Chief Grace had recommended that we speak with, uh, a deputy superintendent of the Police Department in Brookline, where they have four separate locations. And, um.
And they were one of the first ones that got in.
They were one of the first ones, right. They were one of the first ones to get in. He explained how it has worked over the course of several years now and how it's been a real, you know, has, has been very successful for the community. He also talked about the pros and cons, um, but the pros and cons weren't nearly as significant as we all thought they would be. In fact, um, he was, they were, he said that the, that the impact in the community has not been, um, uh, what they thought initially. And in fact, they've had fewer issues related to cannabis sales than they have with alcohol sales. So, um, they said that initially there was concern about the various locations when they first opened because they would be overrun with traffic and, and issues, and people waiting outside and causing issues. They said initially there was a bit of a crowd control issue, but after they, they got going and the, and the stores were open and there were other stores opening, it became, it's, it quickly disappeared. So now it's just a, a free flow of traffic. It handles on a regular, it runs like a normal business. Um, the, the companies that move in are, you know, well backed financially, so they don't, uh, so their, their, their stores are really well appointed. They're very nice looking stores. They're not something that you would be afraid of in your community. And the names are actually pretty creative in some cases that they've seen, so, that I've seen so far. So, uh.
And they said, like, think about things like that they hadn't thought of, like.
Yeah.
Bathrooms.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, there was different things that, like, we didn't think of that, you know, make sure you think of if this is something you.
And, and this is an evolving, this is an evolving industry, as we know. Because so it, who would have thought that we'd be talking about this even six, seven, eight years ago, right? So here we are today. It's an evolving industry because now it's not just, you know, uh, you know, inhaling marijuana, it's also consuming it through different types of foods and, and, um, and different presentations that way. And there's actually a whole.
Edibles.
Edibles. There's a whole lot of edibles, but, but even restaurants are actually looking to go in that direction as well. So you're looking to see how this is really evolving into something more different. So I think we, it's sort of like what they, when people talk about, you know, like talking about cryptocurrencies and things of that nature, how if you don't pay attention to it, you know, it'll, it'll, you'll be behind it. And I think this is a case where we're not even behind this one. We were actually a little bit behind it in this case, but, but we're still out there to the point where we need to understand more, we need to, we need to know how the community feels about it. And are we missing out on an opportunity that, um, that, you know, that actually could, could benefit the community financially?
No, it's interesting, because I will tell you, I read, um, I mean, you guys know, I have a child with autism, and I read a big article about five or six years ago, and it was, um, it wasn't local, I mean, it was in Australia or something. And the woman was saying that, you know, she had started her child on some form of edible marijuana, and he had done, like, you know, and I sat there and I thought to myself, oh my God, we should get marijuana for Harley, like, you know? And there, there just wasn't enough at the time. There wasn't enough studies.
Enough research, enough research.
And whatever. And, you know, sometimes you, you'd reach for anything to, you know, to, anything to help your job.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, that was, I said, I said five, it might have been 10 years ago. Like, it was a long time ago. So, I mean, you know, things, you know.
Things have evolved. There's no question, any question of.
We all know there's going to be a lot of discussion, a lot of debate on this article.
There will be, but I, but I think the debate now is a different debate than it was even just a while, a short while ago. Because, um, people, I think, have, have actually come to understand that this is something that's happening all around us and that we really should, should pay attention to it.
So the, one of the reasons why, if you remember, we voted not to five years ago was because it was, there were no regulations yet.
Right.
We didn't know where it was going. And, and a lot of the discussion went, you know, if we don't know where it's going, you know, maybe it's best we don't.
Don't be the first, yeah.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's vote it down now and, and relook at it down the road. And now we're down the road.
Yeah. So that's where we are. And I think it'll be much more than just Bill. I think it'll be like Chief Grace and.
Sure. There's several people.
Much more robust.
Matt Brennan.
Matt Brennan. Yep. Obviously Planning Board has to weigh in. Like, this is just a, a first draft. They're going to probably look at the zones, and I don't think anyone wants sales, you know, uptown, for example, you know, and.
So, so even the process alone, and this was the, I think the meeting last week was actually very helpful for, for both of us to understand how it works. But so even if it, if the zoning itself passes, it would take a good year before you'd actually see the first store in town. Because there's a pro, whole process that you have to go through.
The CCC.
Yeah, the, the cannibal control. They're very slow and deliberative in their process. So they, they're very careful about how they, how they put these stores in place.
Is the 3% in perpetuity, as far as?
The 3% sales taxes, the 3% impact fee is for five years, and that's still subject to further consideration. Uh, and, and it may get altered at some point. But you have to, you have to pay close attention to that because that's supposed to be for an impact fee.
Right. But the 3% sales, that's what I was referring to, the sales tax, that's, the state is committed to paying that.
Well, it's actually, it, it is ours. That, that money comes.
I'm sorry. The state is, so.
Is supportive of that for, 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 uh.
Okay.
It'll come directly backwards.
Sales tax on marijuana is 27%.
Yeah. And the host agreement.
20% of that comes back to the town.
Okay.
And we, like, let's say this passed and we had, we could have multiple applications and see where the host agreements come to us. You know, the guy from Brookline said you probably want, you know, one of the, the bigger ones to do this nationally versus the independent. Not that there's anything against it, but they're, you know.
They're better backed.
They're, they're a little bit more experienced, they're, they're used to all this. It's, it's a little bit of an easier process, so.
We're going to have some people from Walpole showing up here, by the way.
Possibly, but, you know, I don't, we don't even know where it would be, you know, although there may be some interest, yeah.
Kind of, kind of we do, right?
Right.
Be interesting to see how it went in Sharon.
Right.
They're on Route One across the street from Walpole too.
Where, where Sharon is, is their facility?
Uh, near, uh, the intersection.
You know where the hockey rink is?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's, it's right out.
Between that and.
Towards Cop's Corner.
You know the penny candy places?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's right there.
On Route One?
Yes.
Oh.
So candy and candy.
Yeah, that's, okay, yeah. That's like industrial.
Right, right near there.
Like an industrial park, yeah.
But it's the very corner one. I mean, it's, when you're on Route One, it's not in the industrial park.
Yeah, nobody lives anywhere near there.
Well, what is interesting about this is that you can sell it as well as grow it, and the cultivation piece is equally as, as lucrative in that respect. Because that, that's, then you're talking about the sale of the, of the actual materials themselves, which, you know, generates a value as well. So you, either way, it's, I mean, I don't want to just sound like I'm just doing this for, because of the, the, all just about the money, but I just do think that it really is something that the town has to think about because, um, when other towns are doing this, you're missing out on an opportunity. So I think you have a look at that.
Got it.
So with that, I think, I think I'm good with the warrant. Everyone else good with the warrant or any concerns or things that need to be taken? You know, obviously this is not final, this is just that we're going to move forward with the articles. Yep. So we don't need to vote on that? Any other comments before we move on to the next item? Okay. All right. So moving on to Assistant Town Manager's update. Mike?
Okay. So, um, just one recruitment to make you aware of. Of course, there are many, but I've previously updated on those. But tomorrow night will be finalist interview for the library director position with the library trustees. But I also wanted to just bring you up to date on an earlier meeting this evening, and that was with the Personnel Board in, in looking at reviewing and updating the pay plans for the, for the recreation positions. So, um, the positions under consideration were Recreation Assistant, Recreation Leader, which are basically Junior Counselor and Counselors, Lifeguard Head Counselor, and, um, Program Coordinator, which would be a Camp Director, Playground Supervisor, and then the Instructor Position, Specialized and Instructional Assistant. So those, uh, the, the proposal was to bring the pay up to competitive rates. So, um, to start with, municipalities are exempt from paying Massachusetts, uh, minimum wage. That being said, we feel it's important to be competitive, especially getting back in the game of reopening our pool, um, and getting lifeguards in, you know, in, in two months from now, um, a lot of places are gonna be looking for lifeguards, so we wanna get out there with a competitive rate, advertise them early, and then the other one that, that are gonna be in high demand very, very quickly are the counselors. So, um, those rates, um, have been updated, so I've been in, uh, working with, in consultation with the, uh, the Recreation Division Director, Renee, and the Human Services Director, Mark, and, um, and, and put these, this updated pay plan in front of the Personnel Board this evening, they voted in favor of that, and so we'll be, uh, getting these, these new rates up on the, the website, as well as attached to the positions, uh, that, that we're advertising.
Do we need to update some of these job descriptions, just as I'm poking around out here, it still references like Debbie's old title, did we look at these job descriptions before posting them? Because they seem to still have the old references.
So those are actually gonna be updated tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and any scrubbing of those, as well as with these rates put on them, so they were advertised, uh, without any rates on them.
Okay.
Until we could get these approved this evening.
Okay.
And, um, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Bill?
So just a couple items, um, one is the fact that the, I did provide the board with a, you know, with a ti, a proposed timeline for the recruitment process for the town manager replacement, uh, which, which you'll see, uh, we'll get into a later date, but I gave you sort of a, an outline as to how it would, uh, roll out, and, um, there are four or five major steps that have to be ta, have to be looked at as part of the process, and then, well, we won't get into it too much tonight, but just wanted to, I, I provided it to you, I think we have to get really start to get serious about it in July and August, and then really start the process formally in September, in order to stay on track, to get the, uh, the process up and running and completed.
And that was my request to kind of get that out there, because I just didn't want to make sure, like, too much time, I wanted to know, when are we looking to start, just, so we're not asleep at the wheel, and then, you know, trying to cram something in, so.
Good idea.
So it's, uh, so it's, you have that, and we can refer back to, and start putting some calendar dates, so we can start moving forward on that. I will not be part of the process, other than to just help coordinate it for you, but at some point, you know, I'm gonna step away from it altogether. The, uh, as far as the Housing Choice Bill, they, just last week, we've been, we've been provided with more and more information about the Housing Choice Bill, which is, was designed to try and provide more affordable and more housing options throughout the Commonwealth. Um, it is particularly aligned with communities who are MBTA communities, or, or are next door, or considered to be next door neighbors to MBTA communities, which Foxborough right now is considered to be, uh, a, a next door neighbor, so to speak, because we currently don't have an active station, um, but it, uh, we, though we all know that we're in the process of that happening. Um, the, the density requirements of the bill are significant in the sense that they're looking at density indications of somewhere around fifteen, fifteen units per acre, which, if you try and compare that to any one project that we have, uh, the biggest, the most recent one was the, the Hanover Project, which was located over by, by, uh, Route, by the ninety-nine restaurant, that was about eight units per acre. So that gives you a sort of an indication of how dense that really is, that fifteen is, is a big number. The other indication is that they, they're looking at about seven hundred and fifty units, uh, that your, that a minimum project should have, so, and you have to have a fifty acre parcel to do that. So, uh, clearly, those are very, very big numbers, uh, and, and impact would be significant to any community, let alone Foxborough, though I think, while the idea is, is good to try and provide more, more affordable options for people, and just more housing, uh, product in general, for, for folks to consider, um, no, no, no argument about that, but I think the density requirements of this particular item, of this particular bill is, is, is pretty strong, and would be difficult for the town to absorb, and, and I think even a support of town meeting. So that said, um, there is, um, there are some, there are some drawbacks that if, if the town does not adopt the, the zoning that goes with that, and that we would then become ineligible for Mass Works types grants, uh, the Mass Works type of grants, and other grants at the state level that would, that certainly have been traditionally helping the town through various planning and, and economic development efforts. So I think that would be unfortunate if that were the case, if we didn't, as a town, uh, su- support that, but certainly understanding the impact of, of how, how dense these projects are would be, I think, problematic and difficult for us to, to, to get through, even at the Planning Board level. So, um, I've actually reached out to some of my colleagues around, uh, the, the state, um, and expressed our concern, I even spoke directly with, with the Secretary, Secretary of Housing, uh, E O C D, D H C D, rather, rather, and expressed my concern about it, and indicated that, you know, perhaps a not one size fits all approach is one that we should be looking at, one that where, it should be pared down based on the, on the size of the community and the, uh, and the density that the town is more traditionally used to seeing. Um, even that, given the fact that there has been some pushback as of late on doing any kind of housing projects in Foxborough, um, we have not, we saw, we saw what happened recently at the town meeting, when it was pushed back just to, just by adding in-law apartments onto, onto people's, onto people's homes.
What did the Secretary, Secretary respond to you?
Well, the response to, to me was simply that it's in the statute, it's, it's so, it's not something he can actually change, which I, I understand, it was actually passed and legislated that way. Um, and, um, he did indicate though that, you know, they're always open to ideas, always open to, to new concepts and, and how we might do this, so we're gonna continue to, to talk and find out, you know, what might work, and I've reached out to both State Senators, as well the State, State Representative, um, to, to see if in fact there's any, any willingness to at least look at this again. And I know I'm not the only one that's, that's expressing this level of concern, a number of my colleagues in this region are actually expressing that same level of, of, of concern over the, over the actual density that, that, that's being proposed for these, for this project.
And if anyone had a chance to join the MMA, um, there, there was a session on this, and it, it looks like there has to be a meeting, there has to be a presentation of the Selectment before May.
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, second, so there, there will be something on our agenda as part of the timeline that's proposed by the state, that this would hit us. Um, I'm not, I can't say that I'm a hundred percent sure what our rule or actions would be at that, but listening to the call, um.
Did, did the MMA have any thought of?
It was more, it was more informational for them, them telling us what was out there now, and maps, um, and talking about, you know, communities with stations versus neighboring ones, like, that was one of the questions that I had to Bill, is, you know, we have a station, but it's not active, so what one are we? And he had said that we're technically a neighbor commit, community right now, so, um.
But having said that.
A lot, a lot still up there and over.
There's a lot, there's a lot of information that's just coming out about it, and I think a lot of folks li, are, you know, liked it, it's like, it's no different than what we talked about, we all, a lot of folks in, in, in town like, like to think that affordable, are, like they had a notion of affordable housing or housing that's affordable for folks, uh, for regular, just regular folks, and, um, the challenge with that is that until you get down to the nitty gritty and start actually proposing real things, you know, the reactions aren't, aren't strong, but now, once they've done that, the reactions are really starting to come out about it. So, because I do think that a lot of this got done, and, and I think that a lot of folks didn't really pay as close attention to it as they possibly, as they should, or perhaps should have. And I think now it's something that we have to take a look at a little bit closer.
All right, and then, so we will have, we'll, we'll go deeper into a presentation on, like, I think we'll actually issue an RFP for the town manager position, select a firm, maybe have them, you know, more, more to come on that one, but at least we have, I want to see a timeline, just to make sure we weren't, you know, missing anything.
Donations.
Yeah. We have the donations here, I think, they're in.
I think they're ones that you've approved though, right? Are they, are they?
No, just the ones that you've approved.
Are they actually in there? Okay.
Yeah.
And.
Your Housing Choice.
And see it.
It's under Town Manager Approved Donations, seven point two.
Oh, fair enough, okay, yeah, so there were, there were two donations, one from Nancy Bach for a hundred dollars, and, and from Robert and Nancy Casano for a hundred dollars, and Recreation Donation is made in the memory of Jeff Scott, and fifty dollars each from Leo Autobyn and Catherine, Catherine Shea, Catherine Ash, rather, Catherine Ash. So those are the, that's the, the limit, and we are working, um, and trying to, you know, work on the, on the warrant, we're gonna be presenting our budget tomorrow night to the Advisory Committee, uh, I have been working directly with the Chairman, Paul Ivanovskis, uh, to start working on scheduling the, these, uh, the various warrant articles, so he's in the process of doing that now with his committee, and so we're, we're already down that road in that process, so.
There's quite a new, quite a few new people, too, this year.
It's a, it's a new committee for the most part, it's a lot of new people.
All the, the names are on there.
Right.
It's interesting.
You know, I'll be arriving late to the Edcom meeting, because I'll be over at the interviews for the Library Director, but I'll check in soon as we're done with the interviews.
But Bill's go, you'll be there.
You'll be there.
Yeah, so, okay, as long as we're covered with someone.
Yeah, we're covered.
All right, so anything else for yours before we move on to Selectmen's Update? No? All right, the only new thing I had, I covered at the beginning is just, the mask policy was obviously, the mask direction was revised today that I talked about at the beginning of the meeting. Um, a couple of us went to the Darkness to Light Training, so thank you to Amy Labrash, is that how you say her name, for conducting that, that training, and I know Steph, you went today, right?
I went today, yeah.
There's a lot of representation there from sports and such, so, um, and they did recommend, Mike, that it's not every two years, it's every four years now for employees, is what the committee agreed, so that seemed like it was kind of new.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that's all I had, anything else for Selectmen's Update from anyone?
Um, I just wanted to mention, I'm, I'm sure, I mean, it's a small town, people probably heard that, um, you know, former Selectman David Feldman lost his father-in-law, Ellen's dad passed away. Um, I didn't know him very well, but my husband speaks so highly of him, and he was very involved in, uh, coaching and helping, um, Ellen was telling me today on a text that, uh, he was very involved with the Booth Playground and, and lots of other projects in town with youth, and so, um, super nice guy, and just, you know, thinking about their family right now.
All right, great, um.
Something came across that, too.
So you've got, do you have something, Bill? Sorry?
No, I was just, I just saw something come across, a text a few minutes ago, that, that, because I know that, um, he was in Florida when he passed, and I think they were trying to.
Yeah.
Get him back up here for a possible.
Yeah, the, uh, the week's Friday.
Week Friday, okay.
Church service is Saturday.
Great, thank you.
I figured, I know you're pretty close with him, Doc, I figured you probably knew, but, um.
All right, thanks, so we've got three action items.
Motion to approve the amended Estoppel Agreement between Santander Bank and PSLC in the town of Foxborough.
Second.